All right, there you go. There you have it. So we're gonna talk about, we can talk about earlier chapters too, but we're gonna talk about a system of profound knowledge. I always found that interesting that he is implying that there could be other systems of profound knowledge. It also implies he could amend this one. It's not the system of profound knowledge. And I think what's interesting to me, I was fascinated when I first went through this to recognize that he was saying, if we take this system of profound knowledge and apply it to making our organizations better, one of the outputs would be the 14 points. So the 14 points are things to do, and this is a theory that they come from, if you will. But he also says, "The individual, once transformed, will perceive new meaning to his life, to events, to numbers, to interactions between people." He's talking about this being used all over the place. Once the individual understands profound knowledge, he will apply its principles in every kind of relationship with other people. He's offered us something way bigger than how do we improve the organization? I find that fascinating.
It does say for industry, government, education. There should be a dot, dot, dot after that.
Yep.
Fill in the blanks if you feel the need.
But I think, and if you ever have a chance, when you see some news story on TV, sometimes you can use profound knowledge to get a different insight into what's going on. It's fascinating. And he offered us an opportunity to change it. It's a system, so if we got a better idea, we could add to it or change it around.
Yeah. Well, I think we've all agreed that Deming is not terribly prescriptive or definitive either, right?
Yeah, some of the people, some people didn't think those 14 points were descriptive enough.
I mean, Cole probably has a direct experience with this. Have you worked in an organization that's done, tried to do Scrum by the book? Like really, really like tied to like one of the, one of the like very prescriptive methodologies, which is actually a misunderstanding of Scrum, which is intent, its entire intent is that you kind of modify it to your local needs and like rip out the parts that you're like, oh, that's not helpful?
Yeah, orgs I've been in have always done the latter, kind of pick and pull, like what works from them, from Agile and Scrum and, you know, lean and et cetera.
Yeah, as I think I told you, I always badgered the lean people here at Rockadine when I was, had the chance to ask them if they'd ever seen a skinny whale. Sometimes fat has purpose. And is a necessary condition for survival, so you might not want to cut it out.
Hence the fat bear contest, yeah.
Say that again?
Said hence the fat bear contest every year. That we get to watch.
Yeah. Airbus did an audit of our company, did a personnel audit of our company once. And they wanted to see how lean we were. And their assessment was, you guys are so lean, you guys are anorexic. And because of that, we didn't win the contract because they thought that we were just right on the edge of like falling apart. So, you know, that is not a bad thing, just in the right places. It's always what's that, it depends.
Yeah, the lean mentality suffers a little bit from what Akoff warned us against saying that we're, we ought to be concerned with effectiveness, but we're preoccupied with efficiency. So, lean is pushing for efficiency. It's not asking if you're doing the right thing. It's asking how do you make whatever you're doing more efficient? The first question is, should you be doing that? What should, what might you be doing instead? If you don't ask that question, you're certainly not gonna make the progress you would like to. So what about a system of profound knowledge?
Just one other thing I was gonna observe is I appreciate the footnote about the contribution of Barbara Lawton and others to this chapter, so that he, you know, he's clear that others have contributed. And we don't know, I don't know much about, you know, the kinds of conversations that he had with these other folks and, you know, how they co-developed their ideas, but I think it's important to, you know, appreciate that he had other minds involved in, as he developed this.
Yeah, and I've seen at least three drafts before the final one. And one of them had as many as eight elements in the system. And I don't, I think one of them had six. There's this one with four. I don't remember what the other one had, but so, and I think he was publishing, he wasn't publishing those. I think he was sharing those drafts with people like Neda Bekaitis and and Peter Schultes and all kinds of folks to get their read on. And I know he really trusted Neda and Barbara Lawton, so he was gonna, I'm sure, have some discussions with them. Be interesting. They should write a book explaining how they contributed to whatever was going on. So one of the reasons we, he has this, has chapter three talk about systems is he's calling this, this thing, his theory, a system. So we need to understand its interdependencies. It's about the interdependencies. It's not about the individual elements. In fact, he says, you don't have to be, you need to understand the individual elements, but you don't have to be an expert. And that's a good thing, because those are four pretty, why, pretty divergent categories. And to be an expert in each one of those four, that would be some kind of genius. A systems expert, an expert in variation, an expert in psychology, an expert in building new knowledge.
And so that idea of interdependence is pretty important, because if you are, you know, only only knowledgeable about one of these four elements and you're practicing and doing your best, you know, doing, trying to learn and apply and so on. I almost said doing your best, but I took that back. But if you're, if you're doing that and, you know, you're well engaged, you are having some impact in each of the other three areas by definition then.
Yep. You can't not be having an impact. You may or may not recognize the impact. And it may take some energy and some insight to dig it out, but that's really what you're looking for. What is the interaction between the variation in the system? What's the interaction between the variation and the people? What's the interaction between what you're learning or what you can learn and the data, the variation?
So specialization, right, to me, so what we're talking about, it's interesting because I wanna, I'm hearing, maybe you guys aren't directly saying it, the generalization versus specialization, which from a systems perspective, minding the gaps or seeing the pig picture, which, right, in today's world, we've got generalists, specialists, perhaps we have, I'm just posing. So which one do you think, and maybe this is a loaded question, which one do you think lends itself more towards what we're talking about for systems, a view of a system?
I'd offer that, that when Deming is mentioning these things, what I, I understand variation, but I also understand when whatever I'm looking at and whatever statistical methods I want to use, I understand when I'm not smart enough to be choosing, and I go to somebody who's smarter in that and talk to that person about it.
Well, I think like the 14 points, I don't think you can tease out any one of them, right, is the problem, right? You have to essentially have elements of all four to proceed, right? So everyone, everyone is going to have some ability in all four areas, right? It's just that you might be way heavy in variation knowledge or way heavy in theory of knowledge, right? I feel like I'm really heavy in theory of knowledge compared to like my peers, right? But that's because of what, where my interests have been.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not that experts aren't valuable, but if your expertise is limited and you aren't exposed to the interconnections and interdependency of things that you're looking at, then the person who's the expert can gain additional insight if you can help him understand that there are other things to look at or other, other things to bring into the view to get a better view of everything together.
Right, an expert may be an expert, but they do indeed depend on others to do their work.
Yep.
Do they all need to, does everyone need to be a generalist or is there still a place for experts with management being the generalists, where understanding the full system?
I think a specialist in each field needs to have a minimum appreciation of the other three things.
Yep.
And then the person who's kind of tying it all together should have a fairly healthy, doesn't need to be an expert in any, any of the four, but needs to have a fairly healthy BS detector as well to make sure that the input that he's getting from these four quadrants is useful. And also, actually, maybe the role of the person that's tying it all together, their role is to manage the interactions between the four to create a healthier system, a healthier organization, healthier interactions.
I feel like, like there's this parallel between the two shaped people concept that's been floating around for a bunch of decades now, right, where, where you have sort of a high amount of depth in like one area and like limited depth in others. And then somehow you get these to link together.
Well, and the, the part of having knowledge and having a light bulb go on and having some understanding of this allows you in a situation to ask the questions that will help people who might be more expert figure out what's going on or offer insight that is more valuable. But you don't even know what questions to ask if you don't have this concept in mind.
Did that answer your question?
Oh, Yoshio, uh, well, yeah, I was just curious because I see that there's a tension there, I think, between, especially in today's world, getting more and more technically right specialized and people get more siloed and then even you hear it in politics, or at least, you know, I don't watch a lot in news, but you hear about right, and all these, and I get it. I like to pride myself that I have, right, even about Deming, right, we could consider ourselves, oh, we're maybe not specialists in the new economics book, but we have a deeper dot, right, you're, so, I don't know, I just find it pretty interesting that I think culturally, at least what I see, especially with the growingness of technology and there is a need there, but then the challenge is not to get lost, right, to be able to do that zoom out and then zoom, right, it's, and I think I hear that from you all, right, you guys do that, you're all specialists in some way, but then you, you have, and then maybe that's the gift we get from this system of profound knowledge or what Deming is providing is a view of that and that there is no like arrival, it's just a tension. I'm just speaking.
That's the, the, I think Michael Thibodeau talked about that. He said that they were applying the system of profound knowledge and be making progress, climbing this hill, and they get to the top of the hill and they look, there's just another hill to climb, because the more you know, the more able you are to see things you didn't know you were, you were ignorant about, you didn't know you didn't know them. And so you can continue to use this and continue to grow. That's also why when you look at the way an organization transforms, it's not something that can really be copied. The technique you use and apply to get the ideas, the system of profound knowledge you can use, but it's gonna give you different results in different areas with different people using it. And so it's adaptable in that sense, but it, but it, but it's also, it also, the more you use it and the more different varieties of use, if you use this for a not-for-profit company and if you use it for for a, for a government agency and you use it in the school, you would have a heck of a lot of talent compared to somebody who had only used it a little bit in one of those areas.
Scott, you're breaking up.
You guys, you guys hear me now?
I hear.
You guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so apparently, so what if you were to take what Tim just said and say Scrum, right? We were just talking about Scrum or, or, uh, to me, that's, could apply to any tool or technique, um, right, you, you can apply it and it has infinite potential, but it's also right that what you guys said about, well, if you try to be dogmatic about it and make it fit and not adapt it. And I know Deming's, right, each, each technique has its place, but, um, yeah.
I think it's, it's kind of baked into the system of profound knowledge. I mean, one of the, one of the quadrants is a very, understanding variation. So the application of the system I design has variation baked into it.
Right, one of, yeah, right, every place you put it, that local environment is the source of variation for every version of the system of profound knowledge that you attempt to implement in a, in a place, right? And my ideas of how it works in my head are different from all of your ideas, I'm sure. Like if we were to go and write down what we think we believe about this, I'm sure we'd come up with six answers.
I agree. Absolutely. I mean, I come from aerospace and precision is almost demanded on just about everything. And in fact, everybody presumes that everything in, I mean, on the engineering side of the wall, everybody thinks that everything is, they think that up to three or four decimal places. It is exactly that. Then you go up to the manufacturing floor and you realize, no, it's not quite that. It's plus or minus. It's an awful number. So, you know, once you understand variation exists on the engineering side of the house, it makes the engineering process much more robust and capable of withstanding some of the wild stuff that can happen on the operations side of the house.
What do you think about the idea of degree of interdependency?
Between the four quadrants?
Well, no, just, yeah, Deming talks about systems and having interdependency and then he shows us a chart that says there's varying degrees of interdependency.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Like in the orchestra, we talked a little bit.
Yeah.
Orchestra versus the bowling team versus the organization. Are you talking about those type? I'm just trying to get more illustration. You're asking about the degrees of.
Yeah, you're looking, you're looking at a system that's, I don't know, maybe it's a baseball team, maybe it's a football team, maybe it's a bowling team. You know, what is the degree of interdependency you see? I see little interdependency in a bowling team. Some more interdependency in a baseball team and a lot more in a soccer or a football team. And a way lot more like he's talking about in an orchestra. And in business, unless it's only two people, I expect, as he points out, it to have a lot of interdependency going on.
I think even a single person, like a single, in the, what, modern parlance of a single founder enterprise, I think it has a lot of interdependence now, because it has the interdependence on its customers and on the systems that it depends on such that it can be a single, single founder entity, right? It has right to do those kinds of things. You have all these dependencies on like services that are provided to you by others. And so, so there's actually a ton of complexity and system there, even with just a single locus of a single person.
And that's because you're drawing, you're drawing that system boundary further out than just a person, right? You're saying, well, and how far out are you going? Are you going, like, let's say you're, I'm just giving you, like, do you go out to the city, the neighborhood, the town, the state?
Well, okay, let's, let's flesh out, let's like flesh out that example, right? So I'm right, a bunch of, I assume a bunch of you folks have done consulting work in the past, right? So we, right, when you're doing consulting work, the, the boundary extends to your client, right? And then you have inputs that you're bringing, like when I'm doing software work for clients, it, right, I'm pulling in tools and things that I use that are elsewhere, right? Open source is a huge thing in my space, right? And so, so like, maybe you don't expand it too much beyond that, but like, oh, where am I going to run these software pieces that we're going to use in this job? Are we gonna run them on the customers or the client systems? Are we gonna run them in the cloud? And then suddenly you have all of those, those pieces are sort of in your system too. How are you gonna maintain reliability of those systems, right? And so, so like, I, I feel like the Deming is pointing us at the, you have to discover sort of where the system boundaries are and then as you can see more and understand better what you're doing, you expand or change those boundaries. And that's just the continuous learning process happening is the, essentially the, the dynamics of those boundaries and interconnections. And that's, it's, it makes my brain hurt.
You know, I think another continuum that's helpful comes from Ron Hyfittson and his crew around adaptive leadership. And at one end of a continuum, you have challenges that are mostly technical. And by that, we mean someone knows the answer. Maybe you don't know the answer. I don't know how to fix my own car anymore, but someone does. And, and if I leave my, you know, non-functioning car in the driveway, the problem doesn't change, even if I don't know what it is. It's not continuing to evolve and, 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 you know, emerge anew. So that's one end of things. The other end of things is where, you know, the, the, the system, the problem itself continues to change relative to itself and, and relative to, you know, other things that, where the interdependencies lie. And so I think the, you know, moving from a bowling team, which is, you know, pretty technical, take this thing, knock down, you know, knock down as many pins as you can, add them up. All right. That doesn't affect, you know, it doesn't affect the next time you try to do that, except I don't even know all the rules of bowling, but it does a little bit. But when you get, you know, as you start to move down that continuum and particularly when you add in interactions between people, which, you know, in a bowling situation, I think there's not a lot of interactions with people, you know, that affect the outcome.
Just sharing the beer.
Sharing the beer, right. And arguing over who has to buy next, but separate from the match perhaps. But in soccer, you know, there's a lot of decisions that reverberate and I appreciate that. I don't always like sports metaphors, but soccer is usually a pretty good one because of the, you know, the sense of flow. But if we just think about, you know, moving from technical to complex where we don't know the answer, we have to learn something. And that is where knowledge of a system and as well the, the whole system of profound knowledge becomes very useful when we need to learn.
I also I'm reminded in reading what it, where he talks about the basis for negotiation. I remember reading that first time, probably, I don't know, 1990, maybe 1986. And back then, when he, when I read it, I said, well, yeah, that makes sense. Right now, it might make sense, but it's a long way from what's going on. Holy cow. I don't, I don't see a lot of looking at as the basis for negotiation, that those of us that are in the negotiation are all gonna be better off after we come to a conclusion. It looks like it's, it looks like it's a zero-sum game winner-take-all kind of a thing.
Yeah, that, that just seems to be the world at the moment, where for whatever reason, zero-sum thinking is winning at the moment.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe, maybe we're in the middle of what Friedhof Capra's concept of paradigm shift and we're in the part where the existing, existing, or sorry, outgoing paradigm is waging a fight against the incoming paradigm, right, in his little graph from the turning point.
Tom, Tom Johnson, when Deming talks about, you know, variation and, and Tom Johnson, when we were first working with him some, he challenged us, he, he looked at me and said, "Why do you want to reduce variation? If it weren't for variation, life would not exist and would not have developed." And Bill, quick in response, he's got a quick mind, he says, "We're not interested in reducing it. We want to manage it." Understand it as best we can and manage it, which is, which is different from eliminating it. The zero defects guys are sort of going for eliminating variation, except they're eliminating, eliminating it, but allowing it within the spec limits. So I don't, not sure what they're doing.
Yeah, I've been in several lean classes where the instructor gets up there and says, "We're here to eliminate variation." I look around the room and I say, huh, I don't necessarily look like everybody else. Maybe I should leave.
Isn't that just physically impossible, right? There is, right at the plank scale, the universe is essentially vibrating. You're not getting rid of it. It's not happening.
Like I said, variation baked into the system of profound knowledge.
Yep. Yes.
Live it, love it, embrace it.
Say more, Jim, say more about what Tom Johnson had to say about that?
Well, Tom, Tom was, he's just poking at us because he, he didn't know who we were or what we were doing. And so he's, 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 he had, he had heard, I don't know if he heard any one of us saying it, because that usually we're nervous about reducing anything. We, some, some, some variation needs to be increased. So it depends on what you're trying to do. So, but he, he challenged, he said, "Why would, why would anybody want to reduce variation?" Because without variation, you wouldn't have life. And without variation, life wouldn't continue to develop. You wouldn't have a bunch of different species and all that kind of stuff.
I feel remarkably boring if everybody you talk to was exactly like you.
But it'd be a lot less scary.
I like scary from time to time.
Yeah, but, but a lot of people apparently do not like scary.
Well, that, that's, yeah, they're scary. And Deming is asking managers, executives to do something that's very scary. That's to accept something brand new and give up what they did. And in giving up what they did, not feel bad about the fact that what they did is nothing like what they're doing now. So they, hey, I'm comfortable with this. I know what this is about. And oh, by the way, if I accept this new way of doing things, it's almost 180 degrees from what I used to do, I'm saying everything I did up to this point in my life was wrong. That's pretty scary. I'm gonna give up everything I, I'm gonna declare everything I used to, I have done in my life wrong and go off in this new, this new adventure. I have done in my life wrong and, and go off in this new, this new adventure.
And that's, that's hard, right? That is, that is a big ask for a lot of people. I think that's, I think that's one of the biggest challenges to adopting these ideas in organizations. It's because that is, that is a, there's a really big ask. Um, and I think you have to be in like the right psychological state to, the mental state to go down that road, right? And I, I don't know what you do if you're in an organization which doesn't want to, right?
And Deming offers that if you're the one that has some knowledge of profound, uh, profound knowledge, that you help those people pull away from the past without feeling guilty, which is no easy task.
Yeah, I, I worked someplace where that was basically like half the, half the work was just being like, I, I know what you guys did previously, didn't work, but don't worry about it. It's fine. We don't have to care. It's fine.
Yeah, but it's, if, if you've made a career out of, out of becoming a lean expert and leaning up all kinds of things, it's going to be hard for you to, to, to give that up.
What was it, uh, talking to a colleague many years ago? I was like, uh, you only, you, what you only get, uh, the first year in your new role to make real change? Because after that, you're part of the problem? And, and what, and then what I've been trying to do since then is how long can I, keep having an outsider view in the organizations which I work for and employ me? And that's, and it's, and it's very hard. It's very.
I, I was working, reporting to the VP of Engineering and then walking back after a staff meeting one day. I said, you, you know, Wally, I, I don't know, I've been working for you for two years with your, your directors. I, I think, I'm not, I think I'm becoming part of the system. I don't think I'm far enough out to have an outside view. And he looks at me and he says, you're plenty far enough outside. So evidently he thought I wasn't part of the system as much as I thought I was getting sucked in.
At, at one of my jobs, I explicitly tried to not know what our business was. And I managed to make it almost two years into that job before I knew what we did.
Isn't that learning?
Yeah.
Not knowing. See, I, 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 I don't know. I, I see the control, right? We want to control and then we get stuck and we're supposed to. But then the transformation, the, the act, I think the learning is more about unlearning or unknowing. And then the trans, it's hard, but it is hard. Right, why, right? But that's the, that's the profound, maybe that's the profound right there and it's, I don't know.
Bill used, Bill, Bill used to say that the, the difficulty with helping a lot of people transform is, is not, not what they don't know. It's, it's about recognizing that there are other things to know. What you know isn't everything and what you know may be challenged. And he said, a whole bunch of people walk in with the idea that they've already got all the answers. So no matter what you offer, they're not interested in making a change.
Yeah. Well, part of it is, is the psychology part, which is, if you tell somebody that here's the way to do, here's a way to do something that's a hundred and eighty degrees off from what you're doing. The implication is that what they've been doing in the past is wrong. But, and, and nobody wants to admit that they were wrong. So how do you get around saying, hey, you know, I think, I think Deming touches on this. I think he says that, why do they get, do things that way? Because they didn't know any better. So how do you teach them a new way without implying that they were doing something wrong? How do you, how do you protect the, the kind of the ego part of it, the psychology part of it? When you go through the transformation, how do you do that without any implication that the past was wrong? Because it wasn't, it's, it's, they did the best they could. Here's something else that makes your life better.
We do, we do a bit, we do a bit of that when we raise our kids. Cause Brendan's thirty-five now, and if he did some of the things he did at five, I'd be a little disappointed.
Yeah.
But I don't think he was wrong at five, at five, you know?
That's what he knew.
That's what he knew. He's okay.
You know, sometimes.
It's okay to be wrong too, right? Like.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
What did you learn from it?
And I, I think we do ourselves a, a bit of a disservice with, uh, maybe a little bit lazy of the one eighty. You know, it's like, it's completely different. I think it's more likely in the spirit of, of leverage and the idea of, you know, something like a trim tab, uh, on a rudder, on a big rudder, it's just a little bit of change over time. And pretty soon, you know, you've turned that tanker around. Uh, you didn't spin it, but over time. And so, um, you know, people, even we, we, even when we say people are resistant to change, that is untrue because people change constantly at their own pace. Um, based on their own, you know, decisions and perception and rate of learning, et cetera. And so, you know, meeting people where they are at that rate, um, can be a lot more effective. Uh, you know, leverage wise, if you want to get this ultimate, you know, larger, larger result.
Well, well, now I worry that part of my problem is that I'm too impatient.
Yes, that.
Yeah, well, you can, you can, you can make a mistake on either side. You can be so patient that nothing ever changes. And you're okay with that, or you can be so impatient that you want everything to change instantaneously. There's, there's somewhere, some kind of medium. Cause people, people will change, but they'll change what they want to change and at what rate they want to change.
It's a comfort level. There's a threshold.
He brings up with, uh, brings up Schuhart. When he talks about variation and mistake number one and mistake number two. Recognizing the difference between common cause and special cause variation. And, and I don't remember if it's in, it could have been this chapter. I don't remember. But he, Deming says, the distinction between the understanding variation and, and, and statistical stability, that idea, mistake number one and mistake number two. He says, most, the most important application of that is in management of people. Which the red bead sure to, sort of points out.
So with the red bead, yeah, I, I, I'm fascinated with the red beads because I think there's something there. Uh, right? Maybe not everybody who's participating in that gets it and gets the transformation. But it seems for a lot of people, and I haven't, I, I didn't get the chance to participate in a live, right in person. I, I think I've just seen some videos and then I did, uh, uh, the guy that did, um, gosh, his name is, he did the red, the book, uh, Deming, the Deming Dimension.
Yes.
What's his name again? The, the British guy, he's a, a huge Deming, um, fan. He wrote the Deming Dimension and he put out a workshop. It's like a self-study. And I did it a couple winters ago when I was. Because there'd be different with, um, I wanted a guy, he's got like years off. And, um, anyway, it would be something that you see the system. Um, the system caused it. So we believe we are in control.
I lost him.
Way to go, Tim.
He disappeared into the ether.
There he is.
I'm there. I'm sorry. I, my, but anyway, I, I, I think that red bead, I, if there's something there, I wouldn't mind hearing more. Especially Tim, you brought it up, like, there's a connection here with this chapter. And then what we're talking about with control and then that red beads, at least from my thinking, it shows us that, wait a minute. If anybody has control, it's those who can tweak the sys, that, that, that particular system or systems, right?
Yeah, and, and, and that, he, he claims the, the, that that is a, a whole experiment is a demonstration of a bad management. In, in part because the people that are doing the work are in essence, invic- victimized by the variation induced by the system. And the second part of it is they, they cannot change anything. The, the rules, the regulations, everything. Everything is, is, is set up and they didn't, they don't get any, they don't have any right, let alone an obligation for offering ways to make it better. And that includes the foreman, who is driving them, if you will. So, yeah, uh, then sometimes folks after the red bead experiment, remember more about plotting averages and standard deviations than they re- remember. That the whole point is that's a bad way to manage because you end up with common cause variation, rewarding individuals for variation that has nothing to do with them. Good, bad, or indifferent. It, it, it isn't caused by then. It's a function of the system they're operating in.
And that illusion of control leads to fear in the organization.
Yeah.
Well, uh, like, how are you supposed to know if you're going to get fired? If like what's determining whether you're going to get fired is something essentially completely random? Because that, that's what the red beads are. They're just a random process. Um, right, I got, um, I, I got really deep into the, I've been interested in intrinsic versus extrinsic motivation for a very long time. And I got real, I ball, almost all of my notes are about that section and, um, right, and I got turned on to, uh, Alfie Kohn's work from, right? And that I finally started reading. So I'm like about halfway through, um, what punished by rewards currently, so.
I remember, I remember the, an Alfie Kohn, uh, gig. He was doing presentation and at a break I went up to him to talk to him. Cause Brendan had been diagnosed with ADD. And one of the techniques they use for ADD is, is immediate short-term rewards to get, to help get whoever it is that has the ADD focused on something. And, and I was reading about it, well, while they say, you know, you can do that, it has some effect. The, it's, it, it was sort of pretty iffy on if that was going to be effective. But I walked up to Alfie Kohn, I said, well, you know, Alfie, there's, there's some stuff floating around that says, maybe extrinsic motivation could be used if somebody's, you know, got a, got, somebody's got an anomalous behavior and, and you can get it, you can get it corrected by using, uh, extrinsic motivation, um, um, temporarily. And he says, what makes you think ADD is an anomaly? He says, the problem is on the part of a school system that can't accept variation in behavior. And my light bulb went on, duh, it's not Brendan's problem. We, we have to help it, find him a place where he can experience what he needs to experience to learn, but it's not his problem. That's their problem. They don't know what to do with him.
I, I think I linked it, uh, in a previous session, but, uh, you, I think you'd enjoy, uh, Sir Ken Robinson's, uh, changing educational paradigms video that he did with RSA. They made an animated version of it. And it was, it was really enlightening for like thinking about this. Right, but I worked in ed tech for educational technology for a really long time, like doing training simulations and games for training and all sorts of stuff like that. And I was always like, you need to make the thing you're doing needs to be fun in itself. So that you have an incentive as the person using the system to go and learn the things that we're trying to get you to learn. As opposed to you're being ordered, um, the, for military systems, right? You're being ordered by your commanding officer to use the system. And we're trying to make it fun, so it won't be such a horrible process, but that's the wrong approach, right?
Yeah, and I, the, this, this chapter, he talks about, needing a, that management's prediction. And I used to offer people that because, so the, it's not, it's not about control, it's about prediction. And I can predict parking lot here, this plant in August next year, on the fifteenth. It's, it's, it's likely to be over ninety degrees and I can make that prediction, some chance of being wrong. But because I can make that prediction, I, I am able to take action to deal with it if it comes about. And Deming offers that all of management is about prediction. And what's fascinating to me is almost no managers have a theory. A theory of management or a theory of much of anything. In fact, they think theories are bad things because, because they're, they haven't been proved. As if you could ever prove a theory.
Probably like, they, the managers don't have a theory probably because just like we, we talked, what's the last week or the week before about training, about like, you know, companies not seeing the benefit, the long-term benefits in training, they probably see it even less on the management side. Right? Like it's, it's, there's no tangible thing that's coming out of a management training versus, uh, you know, like as, as opposed to if I teach you a new skill that, you know, that eventually you, we can see some kind of physical output. Right? Um, but managers a lot more, right? Like people, it's almost like you're assumed to know how to manage from birth. If you're a manager, you know?
With fork, with forklift drivers, we do a lot of training and ask them to cert, get certified and then continue to re-up their certification. With managers, we just give them the job and leave them alone.
This kind of, right, so I came back into sort of Deming study via a book about, uh, building a, uh, what it's called, Building a Better Teacher by Elizabeth Green. She's a education reporter and she wrote this book about the education system. And I, I came to her work because I was listening to an interview with Eric Hennecheck, who I think is a Stanford or was a Stanford, um, like educational researcher. And his whole thing is like, well, you, you can't know who's going to be a good teacher and you can't actually teach people to be a good teacher. So you just need to like run through as many people as you can to find people who are good at this. And that just strikes me as insanity because like you're, you, that, that can't possibly be right, right? But I feel like finding good managers is the same. We just run through managers and then some organizations get lucky and find some good people. And then you get a bunch of people working for them and that little group of, that little piece of your organization functions well. And then the rest of the organization is dysfunctional in whatever way. And it either, and then the little group with, which is functional, either wins and takes over the whole organization or gets wiped out by everyone else. It's like Conway's Game of Life.
Yes.
And the problem with when you elevate somebody who's not capable to a management role is, once they have that title and that role, it's very difficult to, from a ego perspective and everything else to say, hey, you're a really good individual contributor. So can we bust you back down and, you know, bust you down? That maybe that's a wrong choice of words obviously. But, um, would you like to take that role on again as an individual contributor? And the human ego says, no, that's a step backwards. Well, no, it's not. And it's actually, some companies are actually getting enlightened in that regard that they're allowing a technical path that allows you to have, um, equal in authority over your work as said, a manager would, without some of the non-technical administrative.
Yeah, I, I've worked in, I've worked in two organizations that do that.
Yeah.
It was, it was really nice because I could become, I could basically be promoted into more senior technical roles without having to convert into a manager, which I didn't want.
And you have influence over, oh, maybe indirect influence over all the engineers or people in that discipline throughout the entire organization as well.
So another org I worked in had an interest, right? We had an interesting, um, team structure where all the teams were made up of people with different sort of specialties. Um, but then the people with the individual special. Um, but then the people with the individual specialties were members of what we called a guild. And that way you had sort of a connection to all the people who did what you did within the work.
Matrix organization, it's not really rigid.
Yeah, I remember, I remember people used to talk about the double whammy of having a design engineer who's really good, so you promote him to management. So he's a manager now, but he's not very good at that. And you have gained a not very good manager and lost a really good design engineer. So having a dual path saying if you're after money and money's the object and management, managers are making more money and have more authority and more respect and all that. If you have a dual path for the technical side, I, you're probably better off, I would think.
It allows that person to maintain his pride and workmanship and dignity of work, that type of thing. Become a manager, they take away, if you're a good designer, they make you a manager. Basically, they they tied your hands behind your back, they took away the thing that made you happy in work.
I can confirm that with my management career, I got promoted to manager after two years. First level manager, then two years after that, I got promoted to a second level manager, so I have managers working for me. And about three years into that, I said, I don't wanna do this anymore. I spend all my time trying to protect the people from the shit that's coming down from above. I can have more impact on this organization if I'm not a manager. Because as a manager, you can't really fight that stuff, you have to implement it.
Yeah, or if you're an umbrella, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I and I thought, I thought when I, when I was getting out of management, my salary was gonna drop, but salary stayed the same. And I had a pathway to increase my salary and keep going and didn't have to put up with protecting everybody working for me from the idiocies going on around me.
Did you aspire to the idiocies?
No.
Someone must aspire to them, they get there.
I know, I and and I do remember during that first seven years I was working every year or every two years, I forget, they sort of gave us a test. And we took this test and Human Resources used it to to help identify, you know, how to, how to get you on the pathway to what was gonna make you happy. But all of the questions were set up and format and and formulated as if my pa- the path I wanted was to be CEO of the damn company. I don't wanna be CEO of this company, these questions are useless.
That was your performance review, I guess, huh? It's all geared toward, right, the the good drone in the system.
Yep, that is a well, would be different if I actually had that aspired to be a CEO, but holy cow, that's a lot of damn responsibility. I also like the irony in this chapter of a a person who's got a PhD in mathematical physics claiming there is no true value for any characteristic state or condition that is defined in terms of measurement or observation.
Well, no, that, no, that's obviously true because our instruments are not perfect, right? We can't, we can't measure the universe perfectly, we we can make good approximation, that's about the best we can do.
Yeah, but to tell people there's no true value of anything, that's that's because the the rest of the world thinks physicists and scientists make their, make their 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 observations based based on things having true accurate values. Well, accurate maybe, uh true, as he points out, eh.
No, you're wrong.
Well, he's got, he's got that, that in um, out of the crisis, he plotted. I think it was eight different times the physicist measured the speed of light. And he plots the variation in the measurements when they took them at that time. And you look at them, they all have different ranges and different speeds of light and they have different averages. And so he points out, he says, the speed of light depends on which method you're gonna use to measure. And because there's variation with the method, whether you're gonna use the average, the the median, the mode, the highest value, the lowest value, there's a lot going on, you have to you can, you can, you can get an agreed to value, but you can't get a, you you can't get a true value.
You can't even tell how many people are in the room, right? Like
Exactly.
Depends on the perspective of, you know, is this for a lunch order or is this for the fire code or?
Yep.
Yeah, it's, sometimes you ask questions and the first response is who's asking? That helps you narrow things down, it's a fire marshal, it's a caterer. Organizer hanging, handing out swag bags.
It's also interesting, I wonder what he how much more adamant he would have been today. Because he talks in here about information not being knowledge and no matter how much information you get in the instant from all over, it it's not knowledge. And that's, this is, this is written and released in ninety, so written in eighty-nine maybe and part of ninety. But we have, we have ma- much more stuff coming to us and much more information that hits us in an instant, we get, you could get buried in that kind of information.
Well, right, we're drowning information, but we don't have really good tools for working with that stream coming at us and filtering it and sorting it and organizing it. And we we we've lacked those tools for decades. And we've known we lack them, but they're, the, these are still unsolved problems.
And I, and I find it fascinating when I look at at what what's going on with us and us, our ability to do that. And I remember back in high school, reading, reading about Big Brother, and you know how Big Brother handled things? He didn't control the information, he buried people in information, he gave them way more information than they knew what to do with. And they couldn't tell what information was useful and what was not. And I'm, I'll, first time, first time I used Google and I got, you know, three million hits, I said, holy shit, Big Brother.
The Orwell uh nineteen eighty-four, is that where he used Big Brother?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's what, that's what the guy's job was to rewrite history, take old newspaper and rewrite them such a way to fit the current narrative.
Right, I I love the part where they're talking about the, right, I think it's like an addendum or an appendix, right? Talking about the development of the Newspeak language, right? I don't think that's was, right, that was like a separate essay. Um, but right, the talking about how by limiting what you can and cannot say it and how you can say it in the language will limit what you can think, right? And that's, and that's been, but that's, it's very helpful, like understanding the world.
Yeah, that's the, well, the 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 organization that's sponsoring this into in thinking that the idea is that thinking about our thinking is important because if we're not aware of our thinking, we'll get trapped. And you can change your thinking. And if you're aware of how your thinking affects what you do, it makes it a lot easier to change your thinking when it's necessary to get a better view of things.
Hey, Tim, it's, it's Richard, apologies, I think I zoomed in late to this, to this session, might have already started. While you, while you're talking about um, thinking, there's a a really good video on um is it the YouTube channel, Smarter Thinking Every Day? I think Deming Institute has it up there, there's a really good demonstration of how we kind of take thoughts. Um, it's a guy riding a bicycle and he's, he's changed the gearing on the bicycle so that turning left makes it go right, turning right makes it go left. So his complete coordination and balance is, is out of sync. And it actually took him something like, I think he said eight months to try and rewire his brain to to cycle that bike in a completely uncoordinated uh uncoordinated way. So while you talk about information being distorted and overload from the outside, just imagine what's going on on the inside because you know, w- we get very rigid in terms of our thoughts and thinking. We, we find it hard to be uh, you know, plastic or pliable in terms of our thinking.
Yes, thanks for joining us, Richard. Yeah, we're, we're in a Pacific time zone, so it starts at three o'clock Pacific time, I don't know which end of the universe you're in.
I see kangaroos in the background.
Ah, okay, you're on, you're, you're on, well, it depends on what side.
Then Australia or Kiwi land, but it could be.
It, it's Brisbane, Australia.
My, my wife and I were just discussing Brisbane yesterday.
What day of the week is it?
It, it is Wednesday.
Okay.
Summertime.
It is summertime, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
I know, see it backwards, we, even just this, the time zone around the other side of the globe, it's like, I'm here, I'm in northeast Iowa right now and it's getting cold right, it's almost, it's like winter. And you guys are coming into summer, so hats off to you.
Wasn't time zones one of his things that he was talking in this chapter? Or was that last chapter?
What did you say?
He talks, he talks about the the things that we don't recognize are cooperation. We have a lot of cooperation going on and that's one of the things.
Yeah, I read somewhere about that whole thing, how they they figured out the time, right, it took a long ti- I can't remember where I read about it. Some book on time and measurement or some, it was fascinating, right? It took a long time to coordinate these time zones and there's a lot of weird gap, there's
Right, I thought time zones come out of the the early days of railroad because it was necessary to figure out a better way of scheduling um long haul rail transit. And you couldn't talk about these things in the same way.
Usually comes down to making a buck, yes.
Also sailing across the ocean.
That's what had something to do with it, wouldn't it not, when he was navigating the world in the high seas, would then I have had some idea then?
I would think.
When you were navigating the high seas, the the major issue was um keeping a clock that was accurate to where you started because that's where all your charting was, was relative to. So as you went east or west around the world, um, bad things happened and you're like, oh my God, the math doesn't work anymore. Uh, connect, uh, James Burke's Connections has maybe one of the best discussions of that topic I've ever seen.
With all the technology, my apologies, so you, how long have you, have you been going? Is it an hour? Have I missed an hour of it?
Yeah, just about.
Right, okay.
We'll, we'll get it set up right next time, I won't change and you will.
I will.
I also, I also like in this chapter where he he brings up something that we a lot of corporations fall in the habit of doing, you know, it's like the telephone game. Application of random impulses, worker training worker in succession. Management of a company, committee or industry or in government, working with the best efforts on policy, leading themselves astray without guidance from profound knowledge. It's worker training workers really an interesting way not to to get to have, not to have very good control of the amount of variation going on in the system.
I I I feel like I've worked at a bunch of organizations where they're like, here's some stuff, good luck. And that's, 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 that's been my training.
It's even worse than worker training worker, maybe, I don't know.
Well, I'm my, I'm, I'm usually there to go and figure out how to like improve how we do things. So I just come in, I look around, I'm like, what are we doing here? Oh, that's terrible, let's, let's see if we can figure out a better way to do that. And so you, right, you start with, hey, hey coworkers, what are you having problems with? And then you move on to, okay, these are the things we're actually having problems with later, so.
So workers training sounds like the, there's some assumption, so what's the assumption then for, it sounds like Deming is uh, he's, he's pointing out the 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 default way is work, uh, worker training worker, right? I'm trying to follow that.
What, what you would what you would prefer to do is have a way of doing business and somebody who knows how to teach that way of doing business. And then you teach that way of doing business and when if you need another worker like that or that worker moves on and you need to train a new one, you go back to that. Whatever it was you trained in the first place and use a similar trainer to do the training. Because otherwise you're working like, like the telephone game. Or you, you tell something to one person, they whisper it down the line and by the time it gets to the fifth person, it doesn't have any relationship to what was told to the first person. So you're always going back to a source to do the training. So it, and if it, if the job needs to change, then you need to change the training and the idea behind the job. But it, it's, and it's also the same thing with calibrating instruments. You you calibrate your micrometer and then you use on a, on a, on a with, with, with standards and then you use that micrometer to calibrate to to calibrate the next micrometer and use the next mic, that micrometer to do the next one. So fifth or sixth micrometer you got is way different from the first one.
Or similarly, if you're, if you're trying to cut pieces of wood the same size and you use the previous cut to measure the next one.
Yes, yep.
Because it seems easy and obvious, right?
Of course. That's never happened to me.
Isn't, isn't that like Deming's like constant refrain is the thing that is easy and obvious, obvious is the not thing you should do?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, he, he, he sometimes calls it uh common sense.
But get it right and set the stop on your saw.
Yeah, there you go, that's better.
Same old source of truth.
You're talking about like the, the people who are, you know, worker training worker are, you know, trying to convey the, the right thing to the next worker in line. At the beginning of the chapter, he talks about uh, what does he say, fear invites wrong figures. Bears of bad news fare badly. You know, like talking, and I've seen that so many times where like, you know, something happens and then as that message gets propagated up the chain of command, that it, it gets so sanitized that it loses complete meaning. You know, and it's just like, and you know, it it leads to now executives are making decisions based on that faulty information, you know, uh warped figures as he calls them, you know.
I'm, I'm reminded of this uh talk I saw about access control lists. But uh, the, the, it's like the person is explaining like what problem they're having. And by the time it gets to like upper management, they're talking about achy eels and that sounds cool.
Yep.
I think some of the problem with worker training worker also though is that our, our systems aren't quick enough to respond to better me- better methods that have been uncovered and found. And so, you know, I think what really goes along with um trying to build a really good system is to make sure that you've got something that makes it easy to, you know, to to change to a better method and and change quickly.
Yeah. I mean, also mention, mentions in this chapter. And we talked a little bit about the, the idea behind profound knowledge. But adding people to a committee and getting a bigger committee gives you more perspectives. But that doesn't give you profound knowledge because if whoever you're adding doesn't have profound knowledge and nobody in the committee has profound knowledge, adding more and more people isn't gonna generate it.
It's like what we talked about last week, growth, growth of the garbage camp is.
Growth in the committee doesn't generate profound knowledge.
Well, right, and and the, the committee, right, does it have the same, the same Well, right, and, and the, the committee, right, does it have the same, the same issue, right, is that you have. You essentially have diffuse responsibility. Right, right, uh, right. It's like having two inspectors, who's, who is, right? Were, oh, so and so is going to inspect it. Oh, I don't have to do as good a job inspecting it, right? So if you have the committee trying to like do things, like hopefully someone on the committee is like, oh, I'll just go do the thing. And then the committee has an output, but otherwise maybe not, right? Or you have to organize yourselves to, to do the, to generate what you want. Scott says, do I hear democracy as we know it?
It, isn't it more than just doing the thing though? Isn't it really about knowing what to do and then doing it? I think that's what the link to the. Type of knowledge was.
Yeah, certainly. You have to know what to do and why you're doing it, if you're gonna do a good job. And how it fits in with our, whatever else is going on. This chapter also has uh, has one. Has a statement he talks about with the, as, as Ben was talking about the extrinsic rewards and. And uh. And how. Extensive motivation can interfere with what's going on. And. Nor, he, he quotes Norb Keller famous statement made on eighth of November nineteen eighty seven in a meeting at General Motors. If General Motors were to double the pay of everybody commencing the first of December, performance would be exactly what it is now.
Yeah.
And then, and, and then Keller, Keller offered, he, he wouldn't mind participating in the experiment though.
But he admitted it, he wouldn't change his.
I'm not gonna do any better, but I said, I'd love to try.
Well, I could see that being good if like your existing workforce, you know, if say half of them are so concerned about being able to pay their rent. That the, most of their attention is consumed with that every day, right? Um, wasn't Zappos who we were talking about, I think last, last time, right? They, didn't they essentially do something like that, right? They just went and were like, we're just gonna pay everyone a much higher base salary. So that we, our staff do not have to worry about these things when like. I don't, I don't know if it's exactly different.
So I think in, in what Tim was saying, it's like people are probably being paid fairly. Um, I mean, in, in that, yeah, this was years ago, right? Many years.
When pensions still existed.
Sure, sure. And, and, and today though, many people are, and always I suppose, uh, there are groups of people. Um, who are, you know, the, the living wage is not being paid. But once you, once you have gotten to a certain place where the pay is sufficient for people to live well. Um, doubling that pay is not necessarily going to increase productivity.
That, that's probably.
Might, you know, increase the quality of their vacations, but not productivity necessarily.
What you do is, but I think the intent is. Satisfying the bottom tier of Maslow's pyramid.
Yes.
So they no longer are distracted by external things like, holy cow, how am I gonna pay rent? How am I gonna pay for childcare? How am I gonna afford insurance and blah, blah, blah? Once you take that out of the picture, people can focus on their work. And they're not actually, and if they're struggling. They're, they're more just, they're probably not couldn't focus on the work, they're probably focused on. What other job opportunities are out there for me? So I can actually. They care the bottom tier of, of Maslow's pyramid. I mean, they don't look at it and nobody looks at it in those terms, but. But certainly if you drive out that fear, then they can move into doing the right thing for your, for the job change, for the end of the company.
If we did a plan to study check on that theory. Right? I, I'm assuming that's a theory you're describing that maybe they have. I don't know. I don't know enough about the Sappos. So how did that turn out? I don't know if that's right. I'm saying, cause it's, aren't theories, part of theories is supposed to be. You can, it's, it's experiment or, or you can run an experiment on the theory, plan, do, study, act. Or check, right? Is that the right cycle?
Yeah, I don't know if Zappos is still around, Benjamin, do you know?
Uh, I do not. Oh, did they get bought by Amazon?
Yeah.
You don't have to prove anything. They just got gobbled up by the, by the monopoly.
One of the things they had was they would pay you to quit. If you didn't believe in.
Pay you to quit? Pay you to resign.
If you didn't fit in, yeah.
Well, that's interesting. So basically it's a severance, sounds like.
It, that's a golden.
Like, like for, for new hires after the training period.
Yeah.
If they didn't fit in, yeah. Oh, if they choose, they said it was them that didn't want, instead of firing them. They gave them a severance, it sounds like, but just a different word for paying them.
After their first four weeks, they're given a bonus if they wanted to leave.
And if they didn't take it, they kept them. Well, that's, they did a lot of interesting things, didn't they, Zappos? It's too bad they got gobbled up by Amazon. Maybe, maybe they influenced Amazon, right? I don't know if they kept them as a separate subdivision or like a.
They, they are. They are a separate division, but they're, you know, like all the Amazon divisions slowly getting. Subsumed by the.
Amazonized.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well. I've got my laptop, my laptop's plugged in and supposed to be charging, but it just shut down, so I'm on my phone.
It's not a Zappos phone, huh? Or Amazon.
It took that bonus to quit.
I, I think just one of the reflections on, on, um, you know, what we were just talking about. And, and I think Yoshiya made a, a good comparison there with Maslow's hierarchy. Um, but I, I wonder what proportion of people are, are now living under the sort of poverty line. And because, you know, you certainly seem to get along with news reports that there's quite a few people that are living under the department. It's a, a pretty sad situation to have people working all day. And just not being able to, to pay their bills and survive so that they are having to have second and third jobs.
It's certainly true in this country.
Yeah.
Absolutely. How it is in, in Richard? Is that how it is in also in Australia? Similar statistics?
Yeah, look, we, we do hear statistics like that from Australia. I, I don't know if it's as bad as maybe some of the things that I hear from the States. And honestly, I think a lot of what we study here in, in Deming, I think is, is really good. It's. We do have those qualifiers around, well, these are the conditions. But I guess one thing that's really important to do is to say, well, are they the actual conditions that we're experiencing? Because if, if they're not, then maybe we need to retest our theory or, or, you know, consider. How does it actually apply in our, our current sort of circumstance?
Yeah. Right. I don't think we do those experiments much. People just. Right? Like you're saying, you run an experiment, try it and then you go back and check. They don't usually. Do that, they just. There, there are some interesting, interesting experiments uh being conducted in that way around universal basic income. Uh, most notably that I'm aware of in Stockton, California. Uh, where people um who qualify, whatever their level of income is. Receive a guaranteed monthly stipend, if you will. Uh, without attack, without, you know, qualification, nothing says what you have to spend it on. And then longitudinally over time, over multiple years. Um, asking people, you know, how are things going now, basically? Uh, what are you able to do that you weren't able to do? Uh, how's life? Um, what are you able to? Uh, accomplish what your stress levels, those kinds of questions. And the, the, the practice of universal basic income, don't know the exact amount, uh, what it should be. Uh, but it's, it's useful. It has a positive effect. We know that. We know that. Like, I'm hearing qualit, you had qualitative examples there for how you, right? So that's, that's pop, but that's in, right? Well, you could have quantitative examples too, like fewer evictions, fewer, um, you know, mortgages uh not met. Uh, uh, fewer, um, you know, kids being able to go to school that they want to go to, uh, et cetera. There certainly are, there's quantitative aspects to it as well. Yeah, I hadn't heard of that. Thanks. Yeah, uh, the mayor of Stockton, I can't remember his name, but uh, he's becoming a, an authority. I think there's some articles in the Stanford Social Innovation Review on that experiment. It's been going on for. Man, maybe close to ten years now. And Stockton's one of the armpits of California, so. Exactly, there you go. You, you know that much, then, okay. Yeah, I went fishing years ago in the channel out there and met people. Right, it's kind of a. Oh, it's also where they made a lot of the barges for the North Slope development, so it wasn't always a depressed area. Back in the day. Anyway, that, that, just the notion of people having what they need for barely living makes a difference.
Yeah. I'm sure that's reflected in the crime statistics as well in the long term. And that's probably a really good indicator of the health of the, of society is just.
Yeah, that's another good quantitative one, Yoshi, thanks.
Well, right, um, the way we calculate and manage um unemployment statistics. Strikes me as insane, right? We do it essentially through polling by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And so if, if it's getting hard for the Bureau of Labor Statistics to gather that data. Because people are not picking up their phones or answering their door or doing all the things that they used to. And are not participating in those surveys, you basically get this like massive underreporting of unemployment. And there, and there are things in the unemployment number that are, you know, we don't cover people who are not looking for work, right? Are just dropped, like you could just drop completely out of the system and you're just like out of the stats because of the way they're collected.
I, I'm not sure which one you're referring to, Ben, Benjamin, but the, I thought they did by. Right, filing of claims is, should be. Be accessible, but you must be talking about something else, the people that.
Yeah, there, yeah, there, there are a bunch of different measures of unemployment, right? So there's like farm, non-farm wage, it's like non-farm wages, right? And so there are some that like they gather information from companies and companies submit data about layoffs and things that are happening. And there are others that are done uh through phone and in-person survey. Which was, I guess, that, um, the, that's what the census does when they're not doing the census, basically.
I mean, things get kind of squirrely. The tradition of doing that gets really up, upended when you start talking about the gig economy. Non, non W two wage earners. Uh, will really screw up the system, so, yeah, it, it, the, the reporting of unemployment numbers. Needs a hard look, but. I don't think we're going about it the right way.
Right, the, the, the problem is, is a lot of things need a hard look and we're not, we're not really structured to do that in our grand setup.
And, and Ben, I think we have the, we've got the same thing over here. I'm pretty sure they don't give people their welfare payments. If they haven't demonstrated that they've applied for a certain number of jobs in a, a period and, and you. I think people who are, are kind of near a threshold say they could be bothered.
Was that that during COVID, they had that, uh, right, there's, uh. What they call the great resignation, people just dropped out of the system for a while during COVID. They call it the great resignation. And that really messed, and of course, there was other stuff going on, right? It's hard to tease out cause versus. You know, correlation with exact causes, but. Um, people just get tired of the system, right, that we have and then they. Off, and then we still have that. A GDP and. Um, it's interesting. And then we, we make assumptions, buy the stock based on, buy stocks based on these things or, right? And it may be not even accurate, right? Or, or like you were saying about measurements, right? They only measure, they're all very limited. They're very, very limited. Maybe taking the aggregate, you could make kind of your best guess on a theory, but.
Right, like, could you apply something like what five thirty eight's uh electioneering model of taking the essentially. What weighted average of polls to try and get a more accurate num, to try and get a better view on what's going on? Could you do that with like unemployment data? If you were like, oh, we're good, the government is going to employ ten organizations to come up with ten different approaches to measuring unemployment. And then we're gonna take the, some kind of weighted average of, of those uh ten techniques. And then assemble that into better data? I'm not sure it would be better, right? I think it'd just be more noisy, right?
Let me ask a stupid question. What would, what do we do with that unemployment number anyways?
Uh, re, report it month to month and don't look at whether it varies over time, kind of mostly. Um, I guess we talk about uh what holiday employment as a sort of special case out of the.
I mean, how do we use that to improve the health of a society or an economy? I mean. Is that a leading indicator of the health of an economy, trading indicator, or is it just a number?
Pretty much just a number.
I think it's just a number that.
It affects interest rate determination.
S R C?
We, we, uh, Steve was saying we use it to determine interest rate, right? The Fed uses unemployment data and inflation calculations and a bunch of other things that they generate data about to try and decide. What to do with the inf, with the interest rate, but I'm not sure that that isn't all just like made up. Too, right? It's, it's just, this is, this is the way we've decided to kind of work on the thing. And, and it seems like we've been doing a better job of not having a depression or major like economic crisis every ten years. But we've maybe only spread them out to every twenty.
Well, and there's probably no, no more complex system in the world than, than the one that they're trying to deal with, so. I, I cut him a lot of slack.
Yeah. I, I, I think the, the one number that I don't see reported or talked about very often is something called the Gini index or Gini coefficient. Have you heard about that?
Which one is that?
G I N I, the Gini coefficient. Gini coefficient, it measures the wealth distribution in a society.
Ah.
Gini index of zero means that everybody is, has the same amount of wealth. And then, um, one means that all the wealth is concentrated at the very top. And, and right now, I think the United States has a pretty, for a developed nation, I think the United States is a pretty piss poor. Gini coefficient. Because it's all, instead of having a nice, you know, Gaussian distribution of wealth. There, I think there's two clumps. There's a concentration at the top and there's a concentration of people at the bottom of the wealth gap or the. Of the wealth range. And that leads to a lot of uh. Malcontent in society. And that, that, you know, we can talk about unemployment, but that's kind of an aggregate. And, but a Gini index actually looks at the distribution and if the distribution really looks wonky, doesn't look normal at all. That's a pretty good clue that you may not have a real healthy indication. All right, Steve, talk to you next week.
All right.
Hands up. Oh, it looks like Ken's already punched out too. And Ken's back.
My phone's going in, my, my computer shut down and now my phone's kicking in and out, so I'm gonna. Stop the recording before I can't stop it anymore.
Yeah, your, your, your iPhone is living in a quantum universe where it's.
Yeah, on again, off again.
Gini coefficient is too high.
I'm aware I ought to be able to turn this on.
Mine, just if it's in comfort, Tim, I, I, I've had, uh, been kicked out off and on, right? Uh, and it luckily Zoom is pretty smart. Does Zoom automatically log you back in, Tim, on your phone?
Yeah, it does.
So that's the good news. I, I noticed, because it used to be, I think we'd have to log, it must be a new feature in the last year or two. Cause you used to have to log back in, right? Um, now it seems like Zoom is, is, it just brings us back. Back to this meeting. Well, thank you, everyone. I've been appreci, this is what meeting for? And I've appreciated the. And I've appreciated the discussions and
I can't seem, I can't seem to do this on my phone. Can somebody hit the uh, the record, hit the record button and then save it to the cloud?
Oh, you mean to save the recording?
Yes.